Good evening. I'd like to open up tonight's regular planning board meeting for April 21st, 2005. Just a couple of quick announcements. If there's anyone having any hearing problems, just go right to the back, to the camera room, and they have some hearing devices that can help you out. Second thing, I just want to make a quick announcement, and I'm going to say it again. I've been asked from Public Works to also mention that there is a hazardous waste day that is coming up. That's going to be on May 7th, 2005, from 8:00 in the morning to 12:00 in the afternoon at the Beverly Hill Recycling Center over at the Department of Public Works. That is, for any hazardous waste you have at home, oil-based paints, oils, batteries, anything that you've been saving up, since we do this twice a year, that's the time to bring it over. So that's, again, going to be at May 7th, over at the Beverly Hill Department of Public Works, from 8:00 in the morning till 12:00 in the afternoon. So moving on to the first item on tonight's agenda, and that is the approval of the minutes for the first one, for March 17th. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Moving second. Any discussions, comments? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Moving on for the March 24th minutes. We have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Moving seconded. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And chair votes aye. Moving on to the first public hearing tonight. A, the application of the Yangle Family Trust, Robert Eagle trustee owner and API of New Hampshire applicant for property located at 50 Campus Drive, where in site plan approval is requested to construct 108.4 foot by 111 foot, 12,032 square foot, one-story addition to an existing structure with related paving utility landscaping drainage and associated site improvements. Said property shown on assessed plan 267 is lot 23 and lies within industrial district. This was tabled at our March 17th meeting. Do I have a motion to take this off-table?
No move.
Second.
Moving seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. I'm also going to open up the application of B at the same time, although they will be voted on separately, and that's B, the application of the Yangle Family Trust, Robert Eagle trustee owner and API of New Hampshire applicant, property located at 50 Campus Drive, where a conditional use permit is requested as allowed in Article 6, Section 10, 608b of the zoning ordinance, to allow a 12,032 square foot addition to an existing warehouse within an inland wetlands protection district. Said property shown on assessed plan 267 is lot 23 and lies within industrial district. Who'd like to talk to us tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Evening.
For the first time in five months, I'm not here saying to you, "We need to have this tabled," because there's an issue regarding the wetlands. We're finally here, hopefully for some action by the board. I noticed that John Chagrin's plan is dated September 2004, and I think we first appeared here in November. This is API's existing building, which you approved in 2000. At that time, we showed Phase 2 as future addition. The wetlands right now are six feet from that existing building. It was determined back in 2000 that the wetlands were non-jurisdictional because they were man-made drainage swale. Since that time, we have obtained the services of Mr. Brits in the City Planning Department, who oversees the applications, and Peter raised an issue of looking at this wetlands and having Mike Cuomo from Brockingham Regional Planning take a look at it. There was some question, and that's why we've tabled this for five months, whether this was now, because of the past four years, five years, taking on the characteristics of a real wetland, even though it was a man-made drainage swale. Originally, the elevations here were about 40 feet higher, and Iafola mined the ledge off of this, created an entire drainage system from Lafayette Road through West Road Industrial Park, and created this swale. This is the old Hall Road where they used to take the ledge to the crusher. Mike Cuomo, Peter Brits, our environmental wetlands person, Mark West, we've all walked the site, and, yes, indeed, over the past five years, this has taken on some of the characteristics of a true wetland, because it's such a shallow pitch that water has pwned up and additional wetlands have arisen. So a determination has been made that now this is a jurisdictional wetlands, and we must seek a conditional use permit. So that's one of the applications that's before you this evening, is a conditional use permit to be some 56 feet from the edge of wetlands, in addition to the previously tabled site plan application. So even though we're six feet here, and what we're proposing is 56 feet, we are seeking a conditional use permit. We appeared before the Conservation Commission at their most recent meeting, and they favorably recommended approval of the granting of a conditional use permit. Mark West is here to answer any questions you have regarding the impact upon the wetlands. Peter Brits had some very good suggestions and conditions that were placed upon this recommendation, which we certainly are willing to go along with. We're going to provide treatment, some treatment on-site. We're going to be doing some plantings. This is a previously disturbed buffer, and we're actually going to enhance the wetlands buffer. So we think that we're actually making the situation better out there. With that, since this is two applications at once, I will turn it over to John Chagrin of Ambit, who can go through the site plan component of the application, as to what we're doing. It's basically doubling the size of the existing structure, which was approved back in 2000. And then John can turn it over to Mark West, who can do the environmental. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie.
Good evening, John.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. John Chagrin from Ambit Engineering, representing the Yangle Family Trust. The project, as Mr. Pilich mentioned, consists of approximately doubling the size of the existing structure. Right now, there is parking along the southerly side of the existing building. We're going to extend the pavement to the northeast and provide some additional parking spaces, also provide an area to move the dumpster to, and at the southeast corner of the new addition, there will be dock-high loading doors. That will be for the box trucks that the API has. They will load materials onto their trucks for delivery. They still have the loading zone in the front, which is the receiving loading area. So the material coming in on trucks of any size will still come to the front. Their specific trucks will be loading in the back at the new addition. In order to offload some equipment, such as large chillers and other things that come on flatbed trucks, they will need to have forklift truck access to the outside, and that necessitated putting in a small paved ramp to a side door on the addition. You'll see the hatched area is the area that is in the buffer zone. Most of that area is the building, and the building pitch goes east-west, so there is runoff associated with that, but it is runoff from the roof. So it's not parking lot surface runoff. And then, there's only 864 square feet of actual pavement in the buffer, and that is specifically for this ramp that's needed to get up to the height of the floor from the parking area. We met with the technical advisory committee back in October, and they recommended approval with some stipulations, and I'll just go through those briefly. The first is that we do not present their approval to the Conservation Commission as grounds to grant a conditional use permit, which we did not. We presented this plan and discussed the merits of this plan with the commission, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval. The second condition was that we show the water supply to the sprinkler system that is shown on the plans. It is in the same trench as the water line, which services the building. The third condition is that irrigation system shall be isolated with a backflow preventer commensurate with a degree of hazard installed according to Water Division standards. That is not a problem. That should remain as a condition. Fourth was that the dumpster pad be attached to the pavement, which we have done. The dumpster pad is accessible by, attached to the pavement. Fifth is that sidewalks shall be required along the frontage of the property, and we would propose or ask that that sidewalk, if required, be constructed on the west side of Campus Drive. The west side of Campus Drive is flatter. This side has a drop-off. So construction of the sidewalk would be much more efficient for the applicant on that side, and I don't believe there's an intention to have sidewalks on both sides of Campus Drive in the future. It will be, if constructed, the only sidewalk in the entire subdivision. So there's a long time to come before that connects to sidewalks, and there are sidewalks on both sides. The sixth item is that snow storage should be labeled on the plans. That has been labeled. It is in this front area, and the applicant has been made aware that that is the area they should use. Currently, they are using an area on the north side, but they agreed, and it is shown that that's the area for snow storage. And Mr. Pilich discussed the conditional use permit status. So if there are no questions, I'll turn it over to Mark West of West Environmental.
Mr. Coker.
Thank you, Chairman. John, just a couple of things I just wanted to make sure I'm clear on. Did you say there will be pavement below the Phase 2 and to the side of the Phase 2, which would be the northeast side?
Yes.
I was sort of confused. You talked about a ramp being built and all of that.
Right. There is a paved ramp that's within the buffer zone, that's on the, maybe the southeast side of the building, that goes from the edge of the access and parking area to a door in the middle of the building.
Okay. Maybe I'm missing it, but I see one little square next to the number 108.4, on the far right of that proposed warehouse. I just, I don't see a ramp. That's where I'm missing.
Oh, sure. The square is the concrete pad at the door. The pavement has a line with three tick marks intermittently denoting that's the edge of pavement line.
Okay, so that, oh, I see. It's almost like a path that goes over to the ramp. Okay.
Correct.
I got you. That was A. B, you didn't talk about any stormwater runoff treatment?
Uh-huh.
Can you go over that, please?
Sure. The original plan that was presented, which is what you see here, basically, there is a dividing line roughly at the line of the existing building. And the drainage that's to the west, all of that drainage flows down and collects in the front area, the green area that's adjacent to Campus Drive, flows underneath the northerly driveway through a culvert, and then down 100-foot treatment swale on the north side of the parking area before it gets to the wetland. On the backside, in order to keep the floors level and provide the dock-high door, we had to slope the pavement towards the east. So there's a small area here that slopes towards the east, and originally, we had this area between the edge of pavement and the swale, which is grass, which would be a filter strip. So it would be a grass filter strip. We discussed with the Conservation Commission providing a catch basin with an oil debris hood as an alternative, which we would be happy to provide, and then direct the runoff to the swale. So the method is either the filter strip through the grass or the catch basin with an oil debris hood, and that pretty much is the extent of it. As far as the roof runoff, we discussed with the commission putting in a different planting in the buffer, and we, Mark West can talk, I think, more about that, but we agreed that we would also enhance the buffer. So those are the two treatment devices, either the filter strip and enhanced buffer vegetation or a catch basin with a oil debris hood.
Just so I understand, when you say it's either/or, that doesn't mean that you are going to choose either a strip or a catch basin, but it'll be, depending on the location, either be treated through a strip?
Correct.
Okay, so you actually have two methods of treating it?
Two methods.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that, and I didn't see in the package of material, the exact minutes from the Conservation Commission, but I'm sure that we can work out with Peter Brits what is most appropriate and show that on the plan.
Thank you.
Mr. Will.
I think you're going to have to come back to me.
Okay, that's fine. Let's head.
John, what material is on the ground between the ramp and that backside of the building?
That would be grass.
It's going to be grassed area, okay.
Grassed area. So I think, though, to the north, and northwest and northeast, it would be enhanced buffer plantings.
And then, so what's going to be, is there new irrigation on-site in addition to what's already there for the existing building?
I don't think there's any proposed. I believe that Mr. Cravens was concerned that when they put the irrigation in originally, that they hadn't put the proper backflow preventer in.
Oh.
So he wanted to make sure that they went and retrofit that correctly.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vici. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Enhancing, you're talking about enhancing the buffer zone. Is there a procedure, is there a method of how you're going to enhance it, or is that something that?
I'll let Mark West talk about that. It's just, in this case, it's planting native material, not mowing it and that kind of thing. Right now...
Why don't I interrupt here for a moment?
Sure.
Why don't we let you get the rest of the presentation to Mr. West, unless somebody has more site-specific questions, and we can hear the presentation from Mr. West to get the rest on the wetlands, since it seems to be where the questions are going towards.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark West. I did the original delineation out on the site years ago before the first building was constructed, and as Attorney Pilich indicated, if you leave grassed or wetland area uncut for a long period of time, and it doesn't flood like a pond or a marsh, woody vegetation grows. So there's a complete photo log in my report that shows you what happened to what was once a big, long swale with sort of a ditch in the center of it, that it all grew up with things like willow and speckled alder that grow several feet per year. In a matter of five years, you have 12-foot tall shrubs. The wetland itself was evaluated in my report to see what functions it provided. Other than carrying water from across Campus Drive, from, there's actually a ditch that extends to the southwest, and is also fed by a detention basin for water country for that large gravel parking lot that they have, which I don't think is all that old. It's carrying water down in a northeastern direction through sort of the backside of the industrial park here. And in the evaluation, the main function of wetland appears to be some trapping of sediments, because we have emergent vegetation, and because, quite frankly, they didn't build a really detailed structure. Since it's old, there's a lot of ruts and things like that. Water gets trapped, and some of the sediments in the water get trapped, and it does help clean the water a bit. But I also indicate in the report, there's a lot of water from this industrial park that just sort of makes its way into this, that isn't all that well-treated, because you have older facilities that didn't have state-of-the-art drainage. Because the functions are limited, things like high-value wildlife habitat and species that need secretive protection are not that abundant, but the issue was raised about enhancing the buffer, and what we've talked about doing is, on the backside, there's a few pictures in the report, and I believe all of you got the report. You'll see that the wetland itself has some scrubby vegetation, but right now, the area we're building is basically a grassed area. What we would be doing is, in the area between the building and the wetland that isn't grown up with woody vegetation now, we'd put in a seed mix. They make these native seed mixes, mixes that have not only grasses, but also wildflowers and also shrubs in the seed mix that grow up, and what this does is it helps prevent an invasive species from coming in, things like phragmites and purple loose stripe, which are present on-site, and creates some better habitat or screening behind the building. They don't do any maintenance. I believe that irrigation system is for the landscaping in the front of the building, and basically, they're letting most of it go, except for a strip right along the building. And there are photographs that show what it looks like right next to the building now. Other than that, they were going to leave it and let it grow back. This will just help the area grow back a little quicker into a scrub shrub buffer. Other than that, there's low function. The building, I don't believe, will have any significant impact on the functions that the wetland is occurring now, and as long as we're protecting water quality, I think we're not having any harm to the wetland system.
Thank you very much. Mr. Vici, would you like to continue your questioning?
I would. I don't know if it's, would be appropriate, maybe to defer to Peter Brits, but I'd like to see at least the areas we're going to enhance the buffer zones, those be delineated with what type of species we're going to use. And on the east side, we're talking about a treatment swale. Maybe if we could show that swell in the drawings with a seed mix for that treatment swale as well?
That would be... I'll just highlight, this is the area, basically, anything inside the silk fence here disturbed the soil is where we're seeding. The rest of it, if you have my report, you can see a photograph, photograph number nine shows that it's all grown up with scrub vegetation. So anywhere where shrubs are already growing, or it's already taken over, we're leaving, anywhere we disturb is where we're seeding, but that could be hatched on the plan, and I think John's the one to talk about the treatment.
Mark, on that seed mix that you're specking, that native seed mix?
Yes.
Does that need any nurturing? Does it need watering? What, I mean, is it...
They designed these specifically so you don't, you seed them in, and they grow in well on their own. So it's gotten pretty sophisticated in that they don't, they call this a New England roadside matrix upland seed mix. So it's literally made for, along a roadside that isn't irrigated, that just gets seeded right off the bat. We would straw mulch it just to hold the moisture, but once it starts growing, there's, I don't know, 30 different species of plants in here, so it's got enough different species that they'll do well based on the consistency of the soil and the climate.
Do you have an issue if it's August and it's dry, that you'll only get crabgrass in there, or will...
Well, you don't want to seed any mixture when it's bone-dry, but they want to, when they're doing all their other landscaping around the building, they may need to do a quick hit with water right off the bat, but after that, it's on its own.
Would that be in the instructions for the seed mix?
Most of, I don't know, your standardized landscaping mixes and things like that require some sort of rich, you know, loam topsoil and things like that. We're getting kind of technic here, but a lot of your topsoil comes pretty rich and ready to go. I don't know if it's specifically on, but I can, we can put it in the notes for this mix.
Nice to have it. It seems like a lot of these finish up in the late summer. They seed them if they're not watered. It seems like a lot of times you see the seed mix just not come to fruition, so it seems we have something, they may be watered for the first week, something like that, whatever.
Sure, that makes sense.
Okay, go ahead. We can add the notes to the landscaping plans? Any other questions? Mr. Will.
Yeah, there was some allusion in the, well, that's a terribly useful word, there was some reference to, in the Conservation Commission meeting of porous pavement use, and a few references, for example, Ms. Powers asked Mr. Brits about the pervious asphalt. Mr. Brits said that he would support it. Mr. Chagrin thought the suggested type of pavement would be better suited if it were a parking lot area, not a delivery area with huge delivery trucks, the weight would be too much, and it's a sloped area. Mr. Pilich noted that in his Walmart application, there were some concerns about climate with porous pavement. And then finally, Mr. Chagrin reiterated that the only new impervious area, other than the roof in the buffer zone, would be the ramp. Two questions with all that said. First, could we get more elaboration on what the concerns and risks are with porous pavement? And second, how much impervious surface of this application, or how much surface of this application is porous pavement and how much is regular pavement? Because I don't really see a delineation there.
I'm going to let John...
Certainly.
...answer that.
Thank you.
Okay, the answer is regarding porous pavement, none of the proposed pavement is porous pavement. The commission debated that issue, and at the end of the day, decided that this area was not a good place to use that application. It's an issue that's going to come up, and I encourage anybody, I think you might have gone on a field trip over to UNH, where they have set up some porous pavement, and they're monitoring that. It's relatively new concept. The big thing you want to keep in mind, though, is that if you have an oil spill on porous pavement, it goes right into the ground, so that's the one big drawback that I can see so far. But also, you mentioned the treatment swale. The treatment swale, and sorry if I didn't, I wasn't clear on that, the treatment swale was constructed in Phase 1, so it's already there.
Okay. Mr. Coker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sort of a, something I've never seen before on a plan, and it's a curiosity question more than anything else. Bernie alluded earlier to the, on the northerly side of this, as man-made wetlands, basically, and I think, as it was said, that it evolved over time. If you come around the plan and come down, there's a delineation that says buffer required if north of this, and no buffer required if south of this. I guess I'm a little confused, because if this was man-made, and we have all agreed that it's evolved over time to a real wetland, if you will, why is this line drawn at this point? I mean, how do you delineate that? I don't understand.
I'll answer that, Mark West. There's a difference between this ditch, which is a wider swale now, and grown up with woody vegetation to the north of the building, than the ditch between these two lots here that comes down and dumps out. I made the break here because this is where, basically, simply cattails in a more defined ditch opens up into this woody vegetation. So the discussion I had with Peter Brits, and the discussion I also had with Mike Cuomo, who reviewed it for the town, was how your regulation looks at man-made structure wetlands versus wetlands that evolve. If you look at the bottom of this plan, there's a building here and pavement here, and there's a building here and pavement here. There's only about 10 feet between those two paved areas for this ditch to flow, and it literally was excavated when they build these pads. They build the pads and had a place for the water to go. So we followed that ditch down to where it widened out and started to get invaded by shrubs, and that's where we made the break. So that's the difference. And it was an interesting debate about what is a man-made wetland, and your regulation is fairly specific about the word "structure." But even here, you know, there are now structural treatment swales. A lot of this was built, when they, they didn't build treatment swale, they built ditches. So that's why the difference was made.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Will.
Mr. West, very briefly to elaborate... Mr. West, very briefly to elaborate, or to be more specific. So in essence, that particular section that Don is referring to was intended to be made as a structure, where the section to the northwest of that was an unintentional man-made wetland. Would you say?
You could turn it that way. The difference is, this is holding up as a ditch because it's very narrow and limited, and it can't...it's not growing up with woody vegetation because cattails have invaded it, and it carries water more often. This sort of floods and then dries up a little and is wider, so it allows for woody vegetation to grow. You...whether...it doesn't appear that they're necessarily mowing this ditch. Nowadays, they build a treatment swale, and they may mow it on a regular basis.
The reason why I say that is, is my concern is, this is the first application we're going to have where we're drawing that distinction between a man-made wetland and a structure. And right now, we have a line that says, this is a jurisdictional wetland, and this is not. Okay? So we have to...I'd feel more comfortable, especially when we're using this as a precedent for later applications, to have something more clearly defined. Is it...would you say it's a part of an existing intended structure? Did it happen to pop up like that?
This ditch was intended to carry water between these two buildings, and it actually has tax basins right now. You can see behind the storage facilities that dump water directly into it. This was intended to carry water, but was not very well-defined, was not built a structure in a heavy-duty development area, because behind this, this is all wood, wooded area. So this was not defined as well as a structure, and it's grown up as a natural wetland.
Okay.
But there's plenty of man-made wetlands in town, in this city, some of which are functioning as ditches, and others which will grow in and become jurisdictional wetlands.
I see. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. If I could, I'd like to ask Mr. Cuomo to step forward and just give us his opinion of this, and see if there's any differences. Good evening.
Good evening. Michael Cuomo, soil scientist and wetland scientist at Rockingham County Conservation District. I reviewed this project for the city. I reviewed the wetland limitation that Mark West did, and I've also reviewed the evaluation of the function values, the wetlands, that Mark has prepared. And I agree that with Mark's presentation and his conclusions, both in his written report and his verbal presentation, he did a good job on this, there is, in fact, a difference between an obvious man-made drainage structure on this property that we were just discussing and a naturally occurring wetland. So I think that the city is safe in drawing that conclusion, and I think that it's drawn appropriately on the plan. The only issue I have with the plan is, I would also like to have the area specified on the plan where the buffer enhancement is going to be, where the seeding is going to be done for buffer enhancement, which is items that someone else has already brought up.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Cuomo? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Bernie, is there anything else in your presentation you'd like to...
Just a couple of things. The issue of the sidewalk. As John said, this is the only area...this will be a sidewalk from nowhere to nowhere, and this is...we would certainly, if the board insists that we put in the sidewalk, prefer to put it on this side. It makes more sense. Up here on the other side of the cul-de-sac, the community foundation does actually have a hot-top walking trail, which comes down to this area, so that there could be a natural connection between that walking trail and a sidewalk if we put a sidewalk, if we're required to put a sidewalk along the front of Campus Drive, on the other side of Campus Drive. There are one, two, three, four, five culverts, just going back to the drainage ditch, and just some more explanation of why this started in October, and we're here now, and it's April. I interviewed Mike Iafola, who built this man-made swale when...after they had mined thirty feet of ledge and crushed it and built I-95. He has a very good memory, and he can tell you how, and when, and why this drainage ditch was constructed. And he agrees with Mark West that it was very shallow, and it may have been rutted. And that's what gave rise to, as Mark and Mike Cuomo have told you, this becoming what wasn't originally a man-made wetland, becoming a natural wetland, because it didn't flow through a well-defined channel like this part did down here. That's all I have to add. I think that it's a good proposal. As we said to the Conservation Commission, we will make sure that whatever...we will amend the plans to show the enhanced buffer area and to Peter Brits' satisfaction. And I thank the Department and Peter for working closely with us, and it just took some time. The weather didn't help, but we're finally here. Thank you.
Mr. Pealich, I was just...I'm probably going to recommend a stipulation on the sidewalk issue, that yes, there is a sidewalk, but we leave it to the DPW to have them decide which side of the street it should go on to line up, since they have an idea of what's going to be going on with campus.
That would be acceptable.
That'd be acceptable? Thank you. Is there any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
The only...I'm sorry. The only other thing where I wanted to...I don't know if you know, because we haven't been before you, but the whole bit about porous pavement and the Walmart proposal, originally, it was a recommendation that part of the Walmart, expanded Walmart parking lobby, porous pavement. And what made the decision for Walmart, and ultimately, the technical advisory committee, was that we consulted with New Hampshire DOT, who quite vehemently recommended against it at this time until they had more time to study it, because their experiences to date have been that the freeze-thaw cycle this time of the year with water permeating the porous pavement and then freezing was causing problems, and they didn't know if it was appropriate. They recommended that, well, UNH has got...is in the first year of an ongoing study where they have a bunch of different types of porous pavements, and they said, basically, that they would recommend that anybody take a wait-and-see attitude for a couple of years before they go with the porous pavement. So that's what we...basically, what I discussed with the Conservation Commission, and ultimately, because of the grade change here and the fact that we were putting heavy equipment on it, they didn't recommend that we go with porous pavement.
Understood. Thank you. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to speak? Two, four against this application this time? Anyone in the public? Two, four against this application, third time? Seeing no one rise, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay. I'm going to vote on this in the...on the first one, which was...is just the site plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move site plan approval with stipulations as mentioned previously in the discussion.
Second? Moving seconded. And we have those...those are all the stipulations, as well as...there was one Mr. Ritchie had mentioned, Mr. Ritchie's, and the one...and did you mention one, too?
Nope, I didn't mention one.
No, I was adding the one that...for the sidewalks. Okay.
Can I use this one or no?
No.
This is just site review.
Just site review this time.
What was...yeah. What was Dr.?
That he had the...for the seeding be added to the landscaping plan, be delineated, the mix be specified in treatment, how to quote install it, if you will.
And the delineation of where it was going to be installed. And that it be watered if it's put in during a dry time of the year. I think that's what he said. Accessible to rule.
Okay.
Just clarification, the mention of the oil-water separator. Maybe I'm just looking right at it and I don't see it, but I don't see it on the plan.
They said there was going to be a grass strip or an oil-water separator. At this point, they're going with the grass strip. It's going to be a grass strip.
Okay. I'm very confused.
I might be able to clarify. In the conditional use permit process, which I guess we'll take up next term, subsequent, I did put in a condition about adding an oil-water separator.
Right.
Or an effective treatment is similar, but I think probably we should...when we get to that, we probably should say oil-water separator and leave it at that. I catchphrase it with an oil-water separator in the northwest corner of the site, the area where the dumpster is going to be. That was a condition on the Conservation Commission memo. Also, there was a proposed treatment area. They don't have that on the plan now, so you won't see it there. But that was where that condition comes from.
Okay. Thank you. Clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hayden?
David, I think you can probably answer this, as to what past practice has been in level of detail for sidewalks? What kind of material width are we talking? Is there curving with this?
My interpretation of that motion would be that it would be a conforming city sidewalk. So it would be like five feet in width, and it would be bituminous concrete. That's the white stuff.
With the...with grant curve.
Bituminous concrete asphalt.
Portland cement.
Portland cement.
Portland cement with curving. So it would be a typical city sidewalk.
Okay.
I'm sure that's what I meant. I am, too.
I don't know, since we were making this motion with the stipulations that came out of TAC, if we want to modify, stipulation five, which specifically flows out of the discussion from the lengthy discussion on sidewalks from TAC, we're only going with sidewalk on one side. The stipulation actually says sidewalks plural along the frontage of the property, which the frontage of the property might not be the side we wanted on, so...
Yes. If I interpret what the Chair's change on that would be, is it'll be subject to DPW's determination of where it should be.
Okay.
Which works best.
Yeah.
Yep.
There was a lot of discussion on that.
Mr. Hopely?
I have just a procedural question. In light of this conditional use and the potential for additional structures that might need to show up on our site plan, how are we going to do that if we do the site plan first without them?
I'm assuming that when the conditional use is done, that the motion will include that that be added to the site plan.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Okay, moving on to B, which is the...calling the question for the conditional use permit. Do I hear a motion?
So moved with stipulation...I'd like to see the stipulation for an oil-water separator as opposed to the vegetated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion on the motion?
And that's...you're going to go right there.
Go ahead.
I'm assuming, Don, that you mean for this to be added to the approved site plan.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
And we also...the other conditions the Conservation Commission included what John already added to the site plan through the site plan review process, but also that the treatment device, that the sewer and water treatment device be maintained.
And a report go to Department of Public Works?
Sure.
Annually? Gray-Belton Makeover the motion?
That's fine, but a question.
Give me a second.
Are we specifying the location of this structure at this point as part of the stipulation?
Yeah, it was...from what I understood, it was next to over by where the concrete dumpster pad is.
Okay, I just wanted to...I wanted to make sure of that. Thank you.
Left corner of the site. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. You have your approvals. No, I'm not going to. Just briefly, I'm going to read on C, and that is the Planning Board acting pursuant to New Hampshire RSA 12G13 and Chapter 500 P Development Authority regarding subdivision regulations. And this is on the General Services Administration New England Region Application for property located at 254 Corporate Drive for preliminary and final subdivision approval. There has been a recommendation to table this to our next meeting.
So moved?
Of the May...
May 19th.
May 19th.
So moved?
Then moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moving seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Chair votes aye. Moving on to D, the app.
Can I just add, though, for the record? The Department has been communicating with USDSA, and we are optimistic about the process of moving this application along. The city is looking forward to meeting with DSA on this and coordinating actions with the trade force. We think this is a very important project, and so we'd like to indicate to everyone that we're looking forward to continuing a process with the USDSA, and we hope that we can...
Okay. Thank you. Item D, the application of Philip J. and Marie E. Grouprey, owners for a property located at 297 Beverly Hill Road, were an amended to a previously approved subdivision request to move a driveway from the northerly side of the lot to the southerly side of the lot. Said proposed driveway will be located off Beverly Hill Road. Said property is shown on accessory plan 255, a lot seven, lies within a single residence B district. Who'd like to address this? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Marie Bill Price. My husband's still at 297 Beverly Hill Road. What we would like to do is move our driveway from the northernly side of our home to the southerly side. Our reasons are, number one, safety. The driveway is in very poor condition, the way that it stands right now, and we have very poor visibility from where we are right now. It is not our property, it's a right-of-way for us to use. If we can move our driveway, we would gain about 120 feet of extra visibility. We also, in the future, would like to put in addition onto our home, as our family has grown and the house is getting smaller. The next thing is the upkeep of the road. My husband has taken care of this road. We've lived there for eight years. He salts, sands, snowblows, repairs damage. The road is just out of control as far as potholes, ruts, six inches of pavement drop as you're coming in and out. And we just don't want to continue repairing something that is not ours. You know, that's pretty much it. It's basically safety on our side. I do have photographs if anybody's interested.
Anyone like the additional photographs? Yeah. Thank you very much. Is there any questions for the applicant at this time?
We do have 50 feet of additional space on the southerly side of the house versus 12 feet of space on the northernly side. So it just makes more sense to move our driveway where we have more room. And that's also the side we'd like to put the addition on.
Okay. Any more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the public that'd like to speak? Two, four against this application at this time? Anyone in the public? Two, four against, third time? Seeing no one rise, I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Holden?
That's...I'm sure there might be some board questions, so rather than wait for them and just jump in, I think if you reviewed the memo, you can see that this is an unfortunate situation that developed from an earlier decision effectively of this board, and none of you were probably on the board when it was done.
Except for John Sullivan.
Well, John was here since the city...no, never mind. But in meeting with David Defosis on this, it seems as if this might be a good approach, relocating the driveway. So rather than tabling it, if the board wishes, the Department would recommend that you grant a preliminary approval for changing this amendment, or of changing the amendment to allow the access, but have it subject to going through traffic safety and review with DPW to make sure that the situation is an improvement.
And legal?
With that, I'd answer any quest...and legal. Answer any questions.
Mr. Sullivan?
Is this to be constructed out of...at the city expense or at the homeowner's expense?
At the applicant's expense.
And the maintenance of it? Yeah.
Applicant's expense.
Okay.
This is not...what is presently being used as sort of the double driveway is not a city responsibility.
Okay.
There is no municipal monies being spent, but from the photographs and the situation, the Department is convinced there is a public safety issue. And one way to get at that would be to take a look at an alternative site for this driveway, and the other is for the Department to meet with the legal department and Public Works just to explore the situation a little further.
Okay. Mr. Hopely?
Excuse me, Mr. Jim, but do we have anything that shows where the new driveway is supposed to go?
Would be at the extreme...as you face the property on the extreme lot. That's the other reason for granting preliminary, if you wish, so that it can be reviewed by traffic safety and the site shown.
So just preliminary at this time? So when they come in for final, we'll probably...we'll have better drawings.
I mean, I can't even...right, because I can't tell anything.
You can't because it isn't shown. Remember, this is a change of a condition that was put on in 1978. The original subdivision plan has actually included that in exhibit, I believe. That's the tracing. Obvi, yes.
Well, I thought that was the tax map.
Nope.
I see.
It's come a long ways.
Mr. Hayden.
Just a procedural question. So what are we accomplishing in giving preliminary approval? Do we need that in order to refer it on to traffic and safety?
Uh, it just shows that the board is, uh, looking at that issue a little differently than tabling it. Uh, what I didn't realize is that DPW had begun to take a look at it to see whether the site distances were improved, and I'm told they are.
Because I, you know, I have to agree with Rick, based on what we have in front of us, it's really hard to picture what's being proposed here at all. So from that standpoint, I feel a little uncomfortable voting for preliminary, however, it's definitely gonna come back to us for final.
It sure, it has to.
Then, as long as that's clear.
But this also allows so that we can get in front of the legal department and traffic and safety.
If my name is to...
Please, Mr. Constance.
Does that mean, though, that no significant investment or construction would be undertaken with that preliminary being approved? And let that not create a situation? In other words...
This just allows the process to get flowing, but they cannot begin work until they get final. But at least allows them to get in front of DPW and get in front of, uh, the...
And your, your point would be that procedurally, it couldn't go in front of those bodies with it being tabled?
It could. But in the time that I, that this was originally written, we had, uh, communication with DPW that they had looked at it and they could see that this might work. When it was originally written, it was tabled because we weren't sure it would.
But there's no danger that anyone's going to expend significant funds in reliance on this? That's my only concern.
You know, to put this all the rest table at the next meeting. I've got, we're setting them on the board.
We can go either way, it was just the idea was to give them preliminary, at least to...
The department recommends...
Positively to go forward.
If you move preliminary, that's okay, I guess, I just...
I would not, I would not move, move to table, it's been called. Move to our May...
May, next meeting.
Next meeting in May. Is there a second to table? It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One opposed. Chair votes aye. It's tabled to our regular.
My message, though, to the applicant would be to get in contact with the planning firm so we could schedule you to get to traffic safety, uh, so that we can wrap this up for the meeting.
And if it seems quick on a tabling motion, there's no discussion on a tabling motion, a vote has to be taken right away.
Just for purposes of clarification, what we just tabled was simply the idea of getting, of revisiting a condition that was placed on an, on a lot, you know, twenty-five-plus years ago. There's no approved, there's no driveway on the plan because there's no proposed driveway at this point. It's just a, simply to revisit, revisit that condition, is that correct? Is that basically what we just said?
Well, when you revisit the condition, you'll see where the proposed driveway is. It's just part of the problem.
Truly, my reason for wanting to table it is I, I don't like to give any sort of approval for, on a blank check, there's nothing, I don't even know what we're preliminary approving. There's nothing here to show what we're approving. That preliminary on file.
I understand your, I understand your, your concern, and I'm usually the person that's, that's very concerned, exactly.
You're right.
But it seemed it wasn't, we were, we're not preliminary approving a driveway with just the act of recognizing that that might be something we want to revisit.
Correct. Okay, moving on to E, the application of Michael Power owner for property located at 105 Saratoga Way, and Thomas and Lisa Conrad owners for property located off Saratoga Way, where in preliminary and final subdivision approval, a lot line change is requested between two lots having the following. Lot thirty-six dash one has shown on Assessor Plan 212, increasing an area from three thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine square feet to four thousand three hundred and forty-nine square feet, and with continuous street frontage off Saratoga Way. And lot thirty-seven, as shown on Assessor Plan 212, decreasing an area from forty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight square feet to forty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-nine square feet, and with continuous street frontage off Saratoga Way. And lie, lying in a zone where a minimum lot area of five thousand square feet and eighty feet of continuous street frontage is required. Said property is located in a general residence B district and shown on Assessor Plan 212 as lots thirty-seven dash one and thirty-seven. Lot plans are on file in the Planning Department office and identified as Plans 3-105. Who'd like to address us?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Attorney Charles Griffin, and I'm here tonight representing Christiana Clues and Tana Clues, the former owners of the property at 105 Saratoga Way, to speak in favor of this application. I'm also here with permission of Thomas and Lisa Conrad, the other landowners involved, uh, and Mr. Michael Powers, the present owner of 105 Saratoga Way, is here as well. Uh, this request arises from the fact that when the Clues bought this property in December of two thousand and one, there was a chain-linked fence along the rear, uh, of the property, which was represented to them as being the rear boundary line of the property. And just inside that fence, there was also a shed, and I think you have with your packet a photograph that I submitted showing the location of the shed and the fence. And as you can see, the fence is, uh, is pretty well, uh, weather-beaten, uh, and we don't know precisely when it went up there, but a neighbor, uh, who lives just across the street on Saratoga Way, and who moved into her property in the early nineteen eighties, has indicated to the Clues that the, the fence was there and the shed was there when she moved into her house in the early nineteen eighties. Uh, the Clues had no indication that their property line was other than the fence until the Conrad's began to develop their property to the rear in two thousand and one. And in connection with that development, they had a survey done, and the survey showed that indeed their property line ran along here and that the fence and the shed were actually on the Conrad's property. Subsequent discussions obviously took place between the Conrad's and the Clues, and the Conrad's did agree to deed the area in question to the Clues. Last fall, the Clues sold the property to Michael Powers with the understanding that they would pursue this lot line revision. So the approval of this request will allow the rear of the property at 105 Saratoga Way to legally conform to the fence line. It will make the lot slightly more conforming than it is, uh, both pieces of land lie in the general residence B zone. And while it will decrease the Conrad property by about four hundred and ten square feet, uh, it will remain a conforming lot and well in excess of the area requirements for general residence B and in excess of the, uh, frontage requirements for general residence B. And I've simply highlighted in yellow, uh, the area that we're talking about, which is four hundred and ten square feet. Uh, I've reviewed the departmental memorandum, have been in touch with the surveyor to indicate that Michael Powers' name needs to appear as the current owner of the property. I've also asked him to indicate the location of the shed. Uh, I've talked with David about the reference to the variance, and just for your information, that variance, uh, was in nineteen ninety-nine and applied to a different piece of property, several houses down. It really doesn't have anything to do with the request that's before you tonight. So in conclusion, uh, we'd ask that you approve the application, uh, so that their backyard can conform to what they were led to believe it was when they bought the property and what it has been laid out to be for many years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any discussions at this time? Mr. Sullivan.
Charlie, after the, uh, fences put up, are they gonna move the shed back from the property line?
Together.
To conform with city regulations?
Uh, I've talked to David about that, and I, and, uh, um, I, I honestly don't know, John, but the issue of the location of the shed, uh, I first became aware of when I saw the departmental memorandum two days ago. I've had some discussions with David about how we might best approach that, and I...
I'll defer to Rick or to David, but I think the sheds cannot be any closer to the side boundary line by five feet and six or seven feet, I think it is, to the rear of the lot.
Well, the way the department's gonna approach this right now is we're recommending that you grant preliminary approval, and we'll take a look at the legality of how long that shed has been there, uh, and then determine whether or not there, there is. Because you're correct, it should be half the height, but if it's pre-existing and that shed looks old, then it may be all right. Our issue was, one, to get it on the plan, and then, two, to try to find out when it showed there to see whether or not it required a permit.
Because I, I think you'll find that that's, that's a problem where it's located right now.
This is one of the ways we find out about these sheds.
I understand. And the other question I have, Charlie, is, it's a nice-looking shed, and it's strictly a personal opinion on my part, except for the backside of it, where the neighbors have to look at it. And I'd almost recommend that the person that owns the shed would put a coat of paint on the back and clean up around the back of the property line, so that somebody's not looking out there, living in a window at the backside of what you see here.
Yeah, uh, well, Mr. Powers is here, so I'm sure he's heard what you've had to say. And, and I would also say, obviously, that the, the area that, uh, comes closest to the shed, uh, is really the driveway that leads into the development up here. But your comments are...
The city is spending considerable money at the landing heights, putting in sidewalks, streets, and improving the area and playgrounds, and I think it would behoove them to spend five dollars and buy a can of paint and to paint it, make it look halfway reasonable, and to clean up the crap that's in back of it. Thank you.
And with that, Mr. Hopely.
Just a quick question, Charlie, you had made a comment that someone in the neighborhood knew about the existence, a long-term existence of the fence. Any idea on the shed?
My understanding is the same. Is that correct? Yes. And in other, in other words, that, that the person that I said was aware of the location of the fence in the early eighties, based on what my clients, has supposedly indicated to my clients that the shed was there at that time as well.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I actually lived in the neighborhood as a teenager in the early eighties, and that shed was there, and it was actually used as a bedroom.
Ooh.
Of all things.
Ooh, that's not...
Well, take this back to your teens.
Not that I know of.
There's no kitchen inside, though.
No, way back in the eighties, but this is a long, long, long time. It's probably a shed now.
No, not a long, long time ago, we're talking about your teens.
Oh, it's ancient history.
Pretty old thing.
Way back in the Reagan administration.
The good years. Uh, with that, is there any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there anyone in the public like to speak two, four against this application at this time? Anyone in the public? Two, four, against, third time, seeing no one rise, I'm gonna close the public hearing. It has been recommended, uh, on this one that we grant, um, preliminary.
So moved.
With, with the other stipulations? Yes.
It's recommended by the planning club.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Moving on to F, the application of Eugene and Beatrice Short owners for property located at 175 Gosport, and Carl Han owner for property located at 340 Odeon Point Road, where in preliminary and final subdivision, a lot line change is requested between two lots having the following. Lot one, as shown on Assessor Plan 224, decreasing from area from a hundred ninety-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-nine square feet to a hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-seven square feet, and with an existing access easement from Gosport. And lot ten dash eighteen, as shown on Assessor Plan 224, increasing an area from fifty-nine thousand two hundred and six square feet to seventy-four thousand one hundred and twenty-eight square feet, and with continuous street frontage off Odeon Point Road, and lying in a zone where a minimum lot area of one acre, four hundred, excuse me, forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet is required. Said properties are located in a single residence A district and are shown on Assessor Plan 224 as lots eight, excuse me, as lots one and ten dash eighteen. Lot plan is on file in the Planning Department office, identified as Plan 4105. Who'd like to address us?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Corey Caldwell of Ames MSc, on behalf of the applicants Eugene and Beatrice Short and Carl Han. There are two lots within the Tucker's Cove subdivision, uh, the Shorts own property off of Odeon Point Road. The large lot here, which fronts on Sagamaw Creek, and Mr. Han owns property which fronts off of Odeon Point Road, uh, at the end of the cul-de-sac. Excuse me, the Shorts are actually fronted on Gosport Road. The purpose of this relocation arises from the, the house was built facing the cul-de-sac and the back of the creek, and the squareness of the way the house was built, Mr. Han actually thought he owned this property, which is hatched on your plan. He has been mowing it, he's been maintaining it, his dog has been roaming on it. Recently, he discovered he didn't own it. Came to us and asked if it was possible to, to change some boundary lines. He approached his neighbor. The neighbor was amenable to selling him some property, and here we are tonight trying to relocate that property, giving back Mr. Han property he thought he already owned. Uh, he just realized now, though, he has to buy it. What we, what we're doing is, uh, simply changing the lot line from this location to this location. Uh, Mr. Han's property is going from one point three six acres up to one point seven. No change in frontage, no change in setbacks or other zoning regulations. Mr. Short's property therefore would go, be reduced from four point five six acres down to four point two one. Again, no change in frontage or any, uh, side or front yard setbacks or zoning regulations. The lot line, as shown on the plan, would be monumented with iron rods upon this board's approval. Uh, the area to change is shown, it's hatched. The only other thing affecting the Han's property is a couple of electrical easements, which we have shown on the plan. This change in lot line would have no effect on either of those easements. So we're here tonight seeking preliminary and final approval, and would answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions at this time for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you very much.
I have, I have just one question.
Right ahead.
You said that you were, if this was approved, you were gonna delineate the boundary lines by putting metal pipes in the ground?
Correct.
You know, my experience has been, especially around saltwater, that those iron pipes within ten or fifteen or twenty years are gonna disintegrate, and you won't be able to pick 'em up with a, a detector. And I'm just wondering whether a cement boundary or something that would be suitable to, you know, withstand the elements and so forth would serve both the city and the applicant.
The detective would stipulate, as per the requirements of DPW, they have the option of requiring concrete.
Okay. Anyone, thank you very much. Anyone in the public like to speak two, four against this application at this time? Anyone in the public? Two, four, against, third time, seeing no one rise, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And is, is there a motion? It has been recommended by the Planning Department for, uh, both preliminary and final, with placement of, uh, permanent boundary markers as required by the DPW and submission to the DPW conforming GSA data for updating city records.
I would move that we approve preliminary and final with those stipulations, and also add, uh, John's modification, uh, relative to the boundary marker type.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye.
Anybody wanna go down to most of the property?
Okay, I'm not gonna read this one fully either. This is G, the application of, it's two, twenty-eight fifty-nine Lafayette Road Ventures LLC owner for property located at, uh, two eighty-five, two eight five nine Lafayette Road for a conditional use permit. Uh, this one was...
Uh, this one has been withdrawn by the applicant, and the board may see it in the future, so I would just note that it's withdrawn and will re-advertise it.
Has been withdrawn. Okay, H. And this is the final, uh, public hearing for tonight, for the application of Harbor Corp LLC owner for property located off Deer and Russell Streets, and the Boston and Maine Corporation owner for property located off Green and Vaughn Street, where in preliminary and final subdivision approval, lot line change is requested between three lots having the following. One, lot twenty-eight, as shown on Assessor Plan 118, increasing an area from forty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-five square feet to forty-seven thousand eighty-two square feet, and with continuous street frontage off Deer and Russell Streets. Two, lot twelve, shown on Assessor Plan 124, increasing an area from eleven thousand nine hundred and eighty-six square feet to sixteen thousand eight square feet with continuous street frontage off Russell and Green Street. And three, lot thirteen, as shown on Assessor Plan 124, decreasing an area from twenty-three thousand three hundred and forty-three square feet to seventeen thousand one hundred and ninety-four square feet, and with continuous street frontage off Green and Vaughn Street. And the minimum lot size in this area is a thousand square feet with no continuous street frontage requirement. Said properties are shown on Assessor Plan eighteen as twenty-eight, and Assessor Plan 124 as lots twelve and thirteen and lies within a general residence B and historic A district. Who'd like to address us this evening?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Donald Peterson, members of the board. I'm, uh, development administrator for Harbor Corp LLC. Uh, we're before you this evening, I am the first of a few approvals we are going to be requesting.
Excuse me, I couldn't get a word in edgewise. I'm sorry to interrupt your presentation, but I will be recusing myself from deliberation in voting on this one.
I understood. Thank you.
That's quite all right. No problem. Thank you. We're here this evening, and I will be brief. The last time I was before this board was some 20 years ago when my colleagues and I developed the Sheridan Portsmouth Hotel complex. We will be back before you again. This is the first of many steps that we are in the process of tracing for the new 200-room hotel conference facility and parking garage on the property across the street from the existing Sheridan. Corey Caldwell will make the formal presentation. I just wanted to introduce myself and let you know that we're here this evening and this request is basically one of allowing for access along the railroad side of the new property that would allow for emergency access and service vehicles as well as cleaning up some lot line idiosyncrasies between the two properties. So with that, I'll turn it over to Corey. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, board members, Corey Caldwell of Ames M.S.C. As indicated, the property here is, there are actually three lots being affected. Harbor Corp. owns these two lots, which are made up by their parking lot now with an irregular-shaped lot line that follows the back of a parking lot that's shown on your plan as the dashed line. And it's, to the north of that is owned by the Boston and Main Corporation. Years ago, I'm told they used this land, the irregular shape, as there was, there were drop-offs along this railroad. They actually used it to load and unload cars. Through time, now it's just a pass-through. And the Boston and Main Corporation no longer stops at this location and drops things off. They continue down to the Port Authority. So what we're trying to do is give them a 50-foot right-of-way for their tracks. The lot line on this side has already been changed some years ago. We're maintaining 50 feet off that on this side, which would give to Harbor Corp. the difference with this narrow strip between the parking lot and this proposed property line here. Parcel 2A on your plan slightly increases from 0.2 acres to 0.37 acres. Parcel 2 increases from 1.03 to 1.08 acres. So there's a very minor actual land transfer here, but it makes the property lines much straighter and it gives Boston and Main just what they're looking for, 50-foot wide right-of-way for their tracks. The purpose, as Don mentioned, was in developing this property here, this little bit of land goes a long ways in helping them to develop what they want on both these tracks. Upon approval, we would set iron rod monuments at the newly created lot corners in these three spots here. Any questions?
Any questions at this time? Seeing none, thank you. I do just want to make for the board's knowledge, and looking at this one so far at the HGC level, they've already coming in with some nice drawings, some nice plans, and one of the intents of coming across this is for a road access to come off green to come in to the back. That's why, and still maintaining that 50 feet off the railroad tracks so that the roadway will come in in back of the buildings. Just for your knowledge. Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to speak two, four against this application at this time? Anyone in the public, two, four against, third time, seeing no one rise, I'm going to close the public hearing. From the department, they're looking for both preliminary and final tonight with the placement of permanent boundary markers from, as per DPW, and submission to DPW in conforming GSA data for updating city records.
Move a approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Moving seconded, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And chair votes aye. Moving on to the city council referrals, we just have this one tonight, and I'm going to step down on this one and pass it over to the vice chair on signage. And while you're passing the gavel down, I again just want to make the public announcement too, that on May 7th, over at the Department of Public Works on Beverly Hill Road, from 8:00 in the morning to 12:00 in the afternoon, they will be holding the hazardous waste day. Again, that's May 7th from 8:00 to 12:00 for the hazardous waste day. Again, that only happens twice a year, so make sure everyone knows about it. Moving on to item three, city council referrals and requests. Item one, request to place temporary signage at Larry Field for the 2005 baseball season. There was a memorandum from Scott Pafford, and I'll defer this to David Holden, please.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. I was expecting Mr. Pafford to be present, but if the board wishes, you do have his correspondence indicating what their desire is. The department has met with several departments to come up with the following recommendation, which consists of six parts. If the board is interested in, in looking at this as a trial period, that it be authorized for a one-year period, and we would suggest actually that it be for the 2006 baseball season, because evidently it's too late for the 2005. The essential elements of the pilot program would be that if we're going to allow signs on this field, Larry Field, that there would be no tagging operations, that where children evidently go out and solicit funds. The signs would be placed no earlier than May 15th and would be removed by July 15th, which is approximately the season. All the signs would face towards the playing field. The sign blanks would be no larger, or actually each would have a dimension of three by five feet, with the location to be determined by the city, and the lettering, fonts, and everything else would be regulated as to color, size, et cetera. I'm not sure what the board wishes, since this could be tabled to allow Mr. Pafford to be present if we want to do this for the 2006 season, or you can do what you wish.
It's the board's pleasure. Mr. Wall.
Actually, just a question. We actually, in the sixth stipulation, all sign backing shall be white in color. All lettering shall be of a dark green color and all lettering shall share the same style and font. Seems a little bit more specific. I can understand the size and dimensions of the sign to avoid some sort of sign glut or sign competition, but why so specific in dark green, this is specific as dark green color?
I think the concern was, and it comes a little bit out of all the departments coming together, that this really is a pilot program where the city's trying to find the balance between allowing a public facility to earn some money, but then allows another activity to cease the tagging, and yet trying not to have it particularly garish, shall we say. And this was just the way the proposal came out, and the idea is to see how that works and you can revisit it the next time around, see if you want to free it up. So if this were in place, for example, in '06 and in '07, we'd be looking at it again to see if it'd work.
Yeah. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any considerable hype for it with this petition and the folks to raise the money in this manner. However, I did get down and take a look at that area, and I think that when the planning department talks to Mr. Pafford, that they should consider the size of the sign and the location of the sign on the fence, because back of that fence is a long walkway that the people in that end of the city walk down towards the old junior high school. And it can get dark and it can be kind of dangerous if they just board that thing up there, with the solid wood signs along the lower half of that fence. So I wish they'd give some consideration to raising the signs up higher so that the people can look into the ballpark and get some light in there as they're walking down, especially at night times and night games. I'd feel more comfortable with it. And other than that, I'd recommend the approval.
Mr. Coker.
Thank you, Mr., is it vice chairman?
Vice.
Mr. Vice Chairman. I agree with John. I don't have a problem with the concept of this by any means. I do have two problems, though. One is limiting the size of the signs. I suppose there's some logic to it. I mean, you wouldn't want to have something like the Green Monster in, at the Little League field, but by the same token, is three by five big enough to be able to see from the bleachers? I don't know. I'm merely asking the question, is three by five adequate? And secondarily, I, to me, it would seem sort of boring to have all the same color, all the same lettering, and all the, you know, the identical signs. I think, again, I like the idea of doing the signs. There's only five of them, so if you think about it, you're having one in the left field, one in the right field, one in the center, and then one splitting those three. There's plenty of room. So I guess, I would be in favor of it without the sixth, fifth and sixth stipulation, limiting the size and color in that.
Counselor Thorne.
Respectfully and with some levity to my co-planning board member, some people think it's boring to have no noise downtown. That's a joke. I, that's intended as humor.
Come down anytime on a Friday morning at 2:00.
I'm going to then turn around and be a curmudgeon and take a contrary position to Mr. Coker's well-fought-out remarks, and just with respect to that, it is one of the more sensitive scenic areas of the city. And for that reason, I personally believe that the dark green signage and even the size in the first instance, given that it's a pilot program, is not unreasonable. We may find that three by five is not big enough. But I'd like to start small rather than start big.
Excuse me, David, is the assumption that these signs are only going to go on the outfield fence?
Yes.
Okay.
I think you need to make that clear, but that was the assumption. Don hit it right. You can put, I don't know, two on the left and the right and then one in the center. And that's why the city would space them so that they're trying to keep some sort of symmetry with it.
And I think that's the way it is at, out at the Plains now, that all, and it'll be similar to that.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Sullivan.
I would just like to say in response to Don, if you can't see the three by five sign printed in the outfield, you'll never see the ball.
True.
Just a question for David. Did Scott Pafford have any concerns about, does he know about these detail items?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess, I mean, I understand what Don is saying, but I would agree with Tom, particularly if Scott doesn't have any concerns, that it's a pilot, let's try it this. I think it's really important, if the pilot's going to be successful, that they are tasteful and friendly to the neighborhood. And it's hard to just say, you can have signs and make them look nice. I mean, I think we really need to be pretty specific or we'll be out there patrolling.
By the same, yes, good point, but by the same token, the object of this is to raise money for the Little League or whatever league it is. I think it's the American Legion, is it Legion Ball plays there? Anyway, whoever, whoever the organization is for, the object is to raise money. If we arbitrarily impose a standard of three to five, three feet by five feet and a certain color, if I'm a businessman willing to put up, I'm going to pick a number and say 2,500 bucks for a sign, I think I'd like to have little say in what color it is, you know, maybe even to the extent of how big it is within reason. I'm not saying we shouldn't have any limits, but...
But then you come back to it's a public facility.
And I think that's why it's a pilot, Don. If this were forever, I'm trying to be one thing, but it's a pilot. Let's see if this works.
And then a year later, we can resist it. I mean, if I may.
Yes.
I would tend to be convinced by the other members of the board. I mean, as much as I would have to agree with Don and the color and font, but not so much the size, I think it looks much more tasteful in a nice orderly fashion. It's for a year. People think, boy, those signs are boring, we can fix it in a year. It seems reasonable to just start it out from now, or as Cindy said, try to start slow and go from there.
Counselor Thorne.
I think it's a great debate, and that's why it's a pilot program, and I'll move the question. I've heard good debate on it myself, and I like both sides of it, so.
David, can I ask one question? And it might be semantics at this point. There's no reference in here to logos. Are these signs strictly going to have just lettering or will they have a company's logo as well?
I think you could probably pull the logo in. The logo, I would assume, would be in there.
That was part of my concern.
And the logo, I'm assuming, that would be in that same green?
Yeah.
Okay.
Richie Lumber, green.
Can have any color you want, as long as it's green.
Right, exactly.
Any other discussion on the referral? For her motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just a clarification that we are going to add to this, that this be the outfield fence only, just to clarify that understanding and that...
'06.
And that logos would be an option as well.
It would be '06.
And it would be '06 if we're certain that that is what they want.
Yeah, I do.
Okay. I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I pity anybody with a sandwich in their logo. It's going to be a green sandwich.
Thank you very much. And while I'm waiting for the gavel to come back. Don, if you can't see a ball, I would love it if you played for the Yankees. They're doing just fine by themselves. Love seeing them tank. Anyway, on to our last item tonight, which is old business, which is a request for a one-year extension for conditional use granted in April 2004 for Mark Giovannatone.
Correct.
For property, pardon me?
Giovannatone.
Giovannatone. Thank you. For a property located off Lang Road. David?
The board may recall this approximately a year ago. This came back before you to get another conditional use because the original one had expired. So that means that this request for an extension of that one is timely and is a continuation of that.
Question to the department, is this Tony Giovannatone's?
It's the estate of.
It's the estate of. I'm going to have to, even though it's only an extension, I have to step out.
Understood. He's been gone for...
Couple of years, several years now. This is for property off of...
Lang Road?
Lang Road. You may recall it.
So this is its first time through. So with that, any discussion? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moving seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And chair votes aye. Okay, and that is it. And again, just for everyone at home, May 7th, hazardous waste day. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
Could board members just stay for a second?
Thank you and good night.
Yeah, no. We just want to make sure you're aware of these invitations.